Hey guys, this is Jenny again. Can you all see the PowerPoint? You can just give me a thumbs up. Or not. Sam can. That probably means you can't do it.
Are you ready on the Zoom meeting?
We're good to go.
Are we recording?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, good evening, and welcome to our special work session to discuss East Main Street and to receive the reports from the New River Valley Regional Commission. Just a little bit of history on this. Back in 2018, we started talking about all of our Main Street districts and really the community as a whole, working with the Virginia Main Street Program, to talk about what could we do with that? How could we be the best version of this community that we can be? And how could we find areas to enhance that would improve quality of life, that provide economic opportunity, and so this evening for prosperity for the next thirty to fifty years? So, call order, and a lot to do. David, would you like to share some thoughts before we get going?
Sure, Mayor, members of council. This is an exciting evening. It's been a long time coming, as Mayor said. This started back before the COVID days and had some bits and starts throughout. The team has all stuck together. It's been a fantastic journey, and we're just really, really pleased with what you're gonna see tonight. The study covers everything from basically staying from Tyler Avenue to Harrison Street, goes up Third Avenue, picks up the municipal parking lot that's up there. Tons of elements are in this study, everything from streetscape to retail planning, to traffic, parking. Includes some design for both buildings. And just be aware that this is all content, 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 content. Try to generate that feeling and that thought in your mind. It doesn't necessarily mean that's what a business owner has to do, or a property owner has to do, or we have to do. It just gives us an idea of where to go, the next steps, and putting all of these pieces together. Makes into a campus, a comprehensive plan, pedestrian safety, pedestrian access, all the kinds of things that you can think of. It's been one of those interactive plans I think we have had. It has been, a number of meetings have been held, have been well attended. You can read here about the survey results, fantastic. Results from that probably one of the active surveys that we've had in a long time. It's been very engaging throughout the process. Cannot say enough, everybody in this room, the planning commission, my third year, EDA, all of our staff members, the team with council, and then, you know, as more of the public, because everybody out there had some role to play. Melissa's gonna talk a little bit about where we started two years ago, our involvement in the Virginia Main Street Program, and kind of why we got to where we are. And then we'll kick it off with our team members. But I did want to mention, you know, this project has been led by the River Valley Regional Commission. And they've done a fantastic job, allowing us to team shortly, and then our partners, Carrie and Mattern and Brett. So, we appreciate everybody's involvement with that. Melissa, you'll clean this up to this point.
Thank you, David. And to reiterate, Mayor, this actually started back in 2018 when the city was going after its Main Street affiliation. And we were having our, we had DHCT come in and facilitate some community stakeholder meetings at Sharpies, where we had great turnout. We had two full days of anywhere from business, property owners, to just residents within the city, citizens within the city. The purpose of the sessions were to determine what local stakeholders identified as assets, challenges, and opportunities that would be happening in Bradford. Another main concern that they found out from that report was that sometimes we reiterated over and over again that they were concerned about our East Main Business District, and really how it worked. So, that as well as the perception that we hadn't partied that way. So, DHCT really recommended within that report that we reach out to the regional commission and our request that they help us with the planning activity in terms of identifying, helping us looking at our apartment inventory and building inventory, and how it needs that to move forward in investments. The application was approved late 2019, and we began in the late, early winter time of 2019, and then of course, COVID. So, as everyone knows, things get halted very quickly. But without being said, one of the positive actions that came out of COVID, if there are any, I'm sure she was playing about it. The regional commission was able to invest in new public engagement tools that really helped us be able to get some really great feedback. I'm gonna let them elaborate more on that. And I'm really pleased, and I hope you're as pleased with us as we are. It's really been a great, I mean, can't thank you enough. And without being said, this key line is dark for the region.
Thank you. You want to call that?
Oh, so nice. I think you all know that Melissa did it all for work for this year. So, yes, this is a continuation of things that we're already doing in the city of Bradford. This isn't anything new. People just recognize the positive things. Particularly on West Main, they have a lot of positive recognition from businesses and communities. So, there's a lot of energy behind how we keep that positive momentum going.
Will you take your mic and put it up just a little closer to me so we can get a good light on us?
How's this?
That's perfect.
David, you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, great. So, Melissa and David touched on some of the initial activities. We wrote a grant back in 2019, supported these first five bullets. Really the content that we included in that grant application. So, we were looking at areas that had economic blank or physical stress in the community, and then we were charged with opening tools that would help us to remedy or address those in a positive way. And then the sixth bullet was one that we identified as a project management team with the importance of seeing significant changes and not just one big change. But how can we identify the lower cost projects that would have high benefits throughout all of these Main Downtown? Some of the changes since 2018, we discussed on West Main Street. You all are doing a great job engaging the property and business owners. Our conversation started in 2018, has continued pretty well through even the pandemic period. And hopefully those conversations will continue to move forward. One of the initial steps we took was reaching out to the Virginia Department of Transportation. And we learned that Main Street is no longer a trapeze without a highway. And so that kind of opens up kind of the possibilities for how we can reimagine Main Street throughout all of Bradford. And some of your neighboring communities in the Sabre District are actually doing just that, trying to think about how to better accommodate pedestrians and transit and create spaces for activities outdoors. And then COVID happened, so how do you recover from that? You all did really well actually to prove the COVID epidemic. You didn't lose too many businesses. You were able to retain a lot of those downtown. So, our project team was led by Ms. Heidi Fink, who's here this evening. She's gonna be bringing it home, I have to finish line, letting us other stackers go first. We also have Nicole first, who helped us on our team's social planning. She's gonna share some of her work with you this evening. We also have Kathleen Armstrong, who's responsible for doing the consumer report document, which combined our, the engagement work with the work that we had at the time of maybe September, consultants were able to share with us. And then two other important team members, Kristi Worek, helped us with GIs analysis, and Meredith Beavers has been an exceptional engineer. She actually helped us develop the table, online engagement tool. And also came up with some great activities on how we could engage college students. Because if you look at us before, we've been out in college for a little while. We were really excited, Meredith, on our team.
Well, I saw that during the platter, for example, where you have balls in a jar and people can very easily find ways to do things. So, it wasn't just going out on paper or online, totally.
Yeah, it worked really well. So, something, things that just could picture the regional commission provided. We helped with the grant 2019. We're trying to help a little bit on the front end of documents and existing conditions, using community engagement work, and then package everything into a file of course, if we can showcase our efforts to our company partner, A R C. So, just a general overview, the planning area, the project area for the East Main study included this highlighted area that we see here. And you've got East, or Main Street goes right through here, East Main. There's nice level in there. So, we've got Third Avenue, Grove, Tyler. And we actually, because we had some early discussions with the chamber breakfast, seven thirty, there were some interesting property areas over here that said they had to extend this way on this side of the rail. We'd be having to work with this to extend it in our project area and adapt the process work throughout. So, some of the initial existing conditions that we observed downtown, and this is our team with staff, as well as walking around with some of the consultants, is that you've got great architecture. And in general, the building conditions were really good. You have a really wide Main Street, so it was good foresight early on that as your population continues to grow, you can accommodate that in the downtown business district. You all actually have very little vacancies downtown. Only twenty-five percent of the total square footage in downtown is currently vacant. You have a lot of good parking. And you see the shift in university activities. Instead of parking lots on Main Street, they're starting this building project. So, you're seeing that reach towards Main Street, and this happens with positive impacts. Some of the other conditions, you can see these bullets are kind of contracts, the initial ones. The building vacancy is often at some of your prime locations. One example is that great pocket park you all have down there. It has a beautiful mural, but the building unfortunately isn't being used. So, those are kind of the noticeable areas. The wide street kind of is used to take coverage. Cars not necessarily go to twenty-five miles per hour. And then parking ownership and awareness, you all have a lot of great parking. People may just not know that, and so they have to park in certain areas. And then Third Street is a wonderful area that is kind of expanding your business downtown. But then you start to see some of the wonderful topography that we have here in Apple, actually, pounds. And so with that, I'm actually gonna turn it over to that, and she's gonna talk about the engagement.
All right. Hi, everyone. To the review, it's all coming. I am Kathleen Armstrong, and the regional parent communication specialist for the commission. And I'm happy to see all of the guys this evening. So, I am gonna talk through a little bit of the engagement that we did. So, it was over the course of four months, we did several different types of community engagement, including kind of unveiling a new engagement technique as a response to both the COVID nineteen and the effects of the pandemic, but also because trends in planning and engagement have moved towards more technologically friendly methods. So... Okay, so here, just for you who are not familiar, this is the EngageInR B dot org or Random Platform website. And this is basically the landing page for all things East Main Downtown Plan. So, here you can see some of the apps, some of the places where community members can engage each other, as well as engage with planning staff. So, just to highlight a few of those tools that made the online engagement so effective. First, we had the survey tools, where we had two hundred and seventy-five responses to the survey, the online survey. And this was collecting information, everything from what changes will help improve the fashion environment of East Main Downtown, all the demographic data. So, a really a varied tool. And then we have, if you see the pie chart there, sorry, this is a pointer pie chart. This was results from QuickPoles, which is a really fast way to engage community members that didn't want to spend a lot of time on the platform, kind of keep the temperature. Also, a really effective tool that we found, that I was actually surprised about, was the interactive map, so that it gives spatial layer to this community feedback. Very awesome. This one was actually a result of what is the place you visit most downtown? It's about a lot of information on that, as well as just kind of like a holistic way to identify and summarize the priorities of the community. And so, to just talk a little bit about the success of this platform, we had almost three thousand people. It reached, or the project reached around three thousand people. A thousand of those people were, became informed visitors by engaging with at least one of the tools. And then five hundred and nine visitors actively participated with mobile tools and each other. So, this is a really effective way to reach a lot of people when we were faced with some adversity on getting those, the survey results. So, and then another form of engagement. Ooh, sorry, I wanted to quickly note that we saw the biggest spike in engagement with the EngageInR B platform after the mayor posted to the social media and kind of pushed the survey results. So, just something to keep in the, keep in your mind in the future, that that was, we saw the biggest spike engagement at that time. So, the Bradford University engagement happened obviously in September, and it was obviously a very important user group to capture data from. The RU tabling took place on two different days in the fall, and I think the beautiful weather probably helped with how many people we were able to engage with. Hundred plus Bradford students and staff participated in the five-question survey. And the RU community was very excited about the potential of the project and brought a lot of great field of energy to both the survey and then also the interactive table event. Like you I mentioned. Similar to the EngageInR B results, participate, participants prioritized aesthetics, access, and opportunities for more activated public space. So, that was, that's great to see this kind of, those results at COVID. And then finally, the stakeholder engagement, which was two meetings. One was more local business owners, and the second was town staff and developers. And then in addition, you had a city chamber of commerce meeting in April. So, through the stakeholder engagement, it really guided conceptual planning. And overall, the group encouraged development that continued to make Bradford a place that was in value. And so, some key areas of interest included supporting solutions to vacant buildings through marketing, other support systems, general aesthetic improvements, connection to the river, which was currently seen as an underused asset, lighting as far as safety and security, but also to encourage walkability and that connection to Bradford University. Also, for the future, looking at design guidelines to, for consistency across interventions. And so, to think about the main takeaways, the, this robust engagement of a East Main Plan really gave the community a voice, but also helped shape the conceptual planning phase, which Nicole will go into further detail about. But all of this feedback created framework for the innovative work here at A R C. So, it's very exciting. Yeah, without further ado, good old, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole. I'll share my personal question. And I'm gonna talk to you about some recommendations. Thank you for having us, and every council and the community. So, community and stakeholder engagement, along with analysis of the same asset, the condition, for keys to understanding the next steps of plan development. The driving, the convergence, the takeaways are good strength, the opportunity to build on historical character and existing assets of the area, distinct identity, development of a distinct identity by improving the area's visual aesthetics and leveraging natural and historical aspects, economic vitality, attraction and retention of businesses, customers and residents, and connectivity, improved experiences and connections to destinations, evacuation, walkability. Key recommendations were developed through these themes, and we'll explore these further this evening. These include creation of an overall design concept, identification of those areas for revaluation, creation of facade concepts and improvements, enhanced lighting, establishing weight mining signage, and improvement of infrastructure. When thinking about these things, themes and recommendations is important to ground at the local setting. East Main Street and downtown Bradford are well poised to give bustling commercial health in Bradford. And part of this is due to the connection with Visit Park and the New River, while unparked and Bradford University. The conceptual design that you will learn about this evening reflects opportunities to introduce more public spaces, improve material aesthetics, and incorporate attractive landscaping elements. There is a tremendous amount of flexibility to reimagine and re-look at unrealized spaces throughout the downtown area, with a focus on placemaking, accessibility, outdoor seating, dining, and street trees. Public art is an effective tool and a place-making strategy. Public art is also a strength currently showcased around the city of Bradford. The gateway is the welcoming door for people entering a neighborhood, and also connection between two and right community areas. East Main Street has two main metro points and gateway opportunities. And the last, we have the connection on Harrison Street with the New River and Visit Park. And then the east, we have a connection with Bradford University. At the, at another intersection of Harrison Street and Main Street is the opportunity to welcome visitors from West Bradford, and also to highlight Bradford as the university, and also the connection with Visit Park and upcoming New River Water Trail. At the intersection of Tyler Avenue and East Main Street, there's the gateway with Bradford University. So, you have a lot of folks coming to Bradford, alumni, students, parents, and putting the gateway at this moment is an opportunity to let them know this is, you know, East Downtown Bradford, and it's a great place to be, visit. Third Avenue, which intersects with East Main Street and extends to Grove, is also home to a number of local businesses. Third Avenue, both multiple well-maintained historic buildings, currently home to popular restaurants and small retail shops. In this section of Third Avenue, the roadway is relatively wide and can allow the water sidewalks extending the duration between Roadways and Main. Somewhere as Main Street, a wider pedestrian pathway could create more opportunities through to implement tree landings, seating, dining, and stormwater management. From here, I will run a live battery break in my studio, come on up, special max, sign, excuse me.
Was that passed off to me? Sorry, I couldn't quite hear.
Not, oh, Sam, can you hear me? No, not you, yet.
Okay.
I think it's you guys.
Sam, I heard you say that pass off. I couldn't hear either, so I wasn't sure who, what we're doing.
Yes, Paul, you're up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, so we, we're having a difficult time hearing on this end, and I apologize for missing that queue. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tom Austin with Madden and Craig. And, you know, we're here to assist you guys and try to conceptualize the streetscape on East Main Street and see what we can do to improve, to improve things there. I heard a lot of great things about the East Main Streetscape, you know, during the intro here. And this, this next phase that we're gonna talk about will certainly build on those ideas and concepts. And that's what I really do have here to talk about, concepts, is when we looked at the streetscape and when we were defining what the scope would be and what the, what the goals and objectives of any kind of study or design would be, we talked about ways to create, you know, new outdoor spaces for dining.
Can you come closer to your mic, and that might help us a little bit more?
Yeah, I'm literally a foot away, so let me see if I can turn that up a little bit.
If you can come just a little bit closer than that foot, that might help with a little bit. Sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. Is that better?
That's perfect.
Okay, I'll try to, I'll try to yell. So anyway, so the, the, the main goals were of, of the Streetscape concept study was to look for ways to create outdoor spaces for dining, retail, and, and displays. And incorporate other seating areas within the Streetscape environment. And the one thing that COVID has taught us is that people really want to be outside more and more now, whether it's. You know, joining together in small groups or, or dining outdoors. I think that's, that's one thing that. You know, we can take, because we could get good from all this, actually. Other ideas were to incorporate landscaping and other green spaces within the Streetscape environment. And then lastly, we wanted to see if there are ways to implement traffic calming measures. To reduce, reduce vehicular speed and improve pedestrian safety along the corridor. And, you know, all those working together would be, you know, would be our goal. So we do have a couple of exhibits we wanted to share with the group. How do I do that, guys? How do I go about, just do I share my screen?
Yes, you can share your screen.
That's great. So. Is that sharing?
You're good to go.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Great, great. So we talked about, we talked about these primary goals for the Streetscape Plan. As mentioned before, we were primarily focusing on Main Street from Third. All the way to the Plaza and Alley at Virginia Street. And then all the way down to Tyler on the, on the western end. We, this, this is probably a good illustration of where we're going with this. And we've talked about these, these bump outs. That can do the things that we talked about, such as increasing the areas for dining and retail on the street. We talked about increasing and adding areas of landscaping to help define on-street parking. Such as areas of this. And we talked about ways to calm traffic and improve pedestrian safety. So we've got some, 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 some more detailed illustrations of all those concepts. One thing somebody said earlier is that we do have the benefits of, along this part of the street, of having a really wide street section. So we do have, we do have the ability to do some roadway diets and to incorporate these things. So we're, we're kind of blessed in that regard. I've got with me today Larisse. And she, she has, is going to be filling in for, for Greg Webster. Larisse is our landscape planner and designer. And Larisse is responsible for developing these next couple of illustrations that show. How we can incorporate these components into the Streetscape. Some of these are sort of prototypical details that could fit anywhere along the Streetscape. Although they're sort of based on a particular reality that we think that works well. So some of the components that you see here include the outdoor dining and retail space. It could be a, a multi-flex space. We have incorporated pedestrian seating areas as well as landscaping. We've looked at dining scenarios where the dining is against the building. Or in some cases, out in these little pockets. So we've, we've looked at both of those. So this is along the, the north edge of the street there, on the south edge. We see a fairly, a fairly densely landscaped area with seating incorporated into it. Larisse, do you want to add something to this? Anything that I've missed?
No, thanks, Tom. I am exactly that. This, this is a. Basically, options that could be used anywhere along the Streetscape. And in addition to creating flexible spaces that can be used depending on what business is located adjacent, whether it be dining, whether it be expanding. Retail out onto the sidewalk or simply pedestrian gathering areas. One of the other major concerns always is pedestrian safety, especially as you are bumping out into the roadway. So looking at things that would help pedestrians and users of that space feel comfortable, including things like. Low fencing or plant massing that is tall enough to act as a buffer, but without. Obstructing vehicular views. As well as incorporating things like. You know, multi-season interest through landscape planting, the potential for things like planters, especially for. You know, even working with business owners who might want to add planters or add color or, you know, greenery in front of their building. And so these are really designed to be flexible spaces. The other thing that they are designed to do is include pockets for tree planting. And that is one of those things that we find in general, adding trees in a Streetscape makes it a more comfortable pedestrian experience. And actually, there's, as a bunch of research has been done, it also tends to increase sales. Of course, you know, cool pavement, all of those things, making it more comfortable for pedestrians to be there and more likely for them to spend time on the street. So all of those things are potentials for the Radford East Main Street. This is just a, you know, a quick mockup of what maybe one of those bump outs might look like. It does not include like the fence element that I talked about, but could include seating, it could include a tree. And we've also shown these with. We've looked at marking these spaces out as kind of special spaces by changing the paving here. Leaving the concrete sidewalk as kind of the throughway and then maybe using pavers for these spaces. Again, multi-season interest with planting, providing shade, and making it a more comfortable Streetscape environment for pedestrians. Without blocking vehicular views. This is, apologies for the image quality. This is the intersection here at Virginia Street and East Main Street. And this kind of takes some of those same elements we looked at, but also deals with. How we get pedestrians across the street safely. And, and one of those things, in addition to the traffic calming measures Tom has mentioned, is, you know, those bump outs give a shorter distance, distance for pedestrians to cross the street, which is. Increases their safety. It gives them a bigger safety zone before they have to cross. And again, and enhancing areas through planting, providing street trees. It also gives us an opportunity, we can even use planting to highlight intersections, which can sometimes be useful for wayfinding. And it also, on the, the, the bottom side of this drawing, also can kind of expand the Carson Courtyard area and. Allow for larger seating area there. And then looking at providing medians, because like Tom said, there's, you know, we've got a lot of pavement there, so we can actually. Create more of this, a more pleasing experience for drivers too, by putting in medians, adding shade, providing that visual interest. Without causing any obstruction to their, their view. So all of these elements can basically be moved in and, you know, slotted in wherever we like along the Streetscape. These are just kind of tools that we can use to enhance the Streetscape for both the vehicular users and pedestrians. This is showing that same intersection. One of the things it does also is changes the paving. As we hit the intersection, which highlights the intersection as well. It also, that change of paving really kind of highlights the fact that we've got. A pedestrian intersection with vehicles. So you can see there's a different color for the pedestrian crosswalk. You can see again, the low planting that doesn't obstruct views, but we also have. Various plants that provide multi-season interest, larger street trees to provide shade and. Areas where we don't want to obstruct anything, we could put in some lower street trees that could be flowering and provide some interest. And, you know, a variety of plant materials. And, and again, that paving along the sidewalk, adding those brick bands to kind of accent the paving and tie everything together. With the, the bump out areas. Anything else?
I think, yeah, I think this picture kind of summarizes and illustrates sort of all the basic components that we're working with here, except for maybe the on-street retail. But as, as Larisse mentioned earlier, the, the bump out spaces are designed to be flexible. Whether it be for retail, dining, or just, you know. Shoppers gathering and looking for a place to, you know, sit down and enjoy an ice cream cone or, or lunch or something like that. So, yeah, the bump outs can be incredibly flexible. Again, you, you've got a lot of parking along Main Street, so you can afford to give up, you know. A half a dozen or, you know, ten spaces in there, you know, at, at the right location. So we also looked at some other things. We looked at storm drainage along here, just again, all on a very, you know, clementine cursor level. And this, you know, the street is, is fully functional. It's got everything we need to make this, this concept work. And, you know, we look forward to getting some feedback from you folks and, and the staff and seeing if we're headed in the right direction. We hopefully can answer any questions you guys have later in the presentation.
Thank you very much. What, what more do you all have?
No, we have Sam Bennett and Cooper Carey who's ready to present as well.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for having me today. I'm Sam Bennett. I work with Cooper Carey. I lead our retail studio. Experiential Studio MixU Studio out of our Alexandria office in Northern Virginia. And I'll bring up my presentation. It's got a lot of pages, but I'll try and get through it pretty quickly. A lot of what I'm going to touch on, everyone else has already kind of talked about with their community engagement. And the, the infrastructure and the history that we already have at, at Radford that's so great and rich. And then how we can build off of that to create some improvements and some interventions to help. The new experience of East Main Street. Share a screen. As you're going to see. All right, can you see this, the presentation?
Ready to go.
Great. Now I'm having. Sorry. Okay, sorry, sorry, hold on. Is this not? There we go, okay. Table of contents, vision summary. What we always like to do is understand. What great destination places can be and what makes them successful. And so we really want this street to be the destination, not only for the students at Radford. And the businesses that are at the other end of, of the street, but also the local neighborhoods. So understanding adjacencies, how people are accessing the site, the environments that we're creating, both the public and the private and the blending of those two. The amenities that we're offering through the retail, whether it's food and beverage or, or local, local stores. Also, the idea of maybe bringing back the market that you guys had down here, just other ways to incorporate and energize. The, the environment in which we're looking at, and then leasing, providing flexible, flexibility with your leasing. Just with the facades that we, we've created. The idea is that over time, as new tenants come in, it's really easy for them to adapt. So it makes it more intriguing for them to be down here and help with the revitalization. Just taking a look at the existing conditions, a lot of it, you guys have a lot of really great bones. A lot of great brick, a lot of great detailing that we really want to hold on to. There are other areas where it looks like over time, people have applied some materials or maybe not taken as good of care of their storefronts and their awnings. So we're really focused on improving, improving those areas and really embracing the ones that already have the beautiful details that we love. And bringing it into a more modern aesthetic. Three key things that we like to look at is activating the street, which Tom and his team just kind of touched on a little bit. Creating a destination and then also celebrating the history of Radford. The design process and creating opportunities. So really taking like both a macro and micro look at Radford and the street. And really look, looking at, you know, the community as a whole, the history, everything that we've got going on. And what we can do to these retail facades to really bring people down, draw people in, and not just the community itself, but people who, tourists. People who want to own and run shops here, live here, work here, all of that. We really focus on three levels of intervention. The first level looks at enhancing the already existing facade by patching and repairing details and finishes, painting storefronts and upgrading lighting. The second level takes into account that first level. And then we provide new awnings, canopies, removing previously supplied materials and bringing the existing sides back to their original luster. And then the third is almost like a complete overhaul, really making some modifications to the materials. New storefronts, completely new storefronts, completely new lighting, looking at how we can modify the signage to really improve those tenants and their tenant visibility and brands. And then, why is this? There we go, whoops. Sorry, there we go. So just kind of taking a, a larger contextual look. Really highlighting key areas. We've got the New River, we've got the university, we've got the existing retail, the existing businesses that are there. And then what's not pictured is the community itself, all of the residences, the families, everyone else that comes down. And to, to have that desk, that idea of destination and eat and dine and get together and gather. And then looking at a little bit closer, just at the whole street along and all of the facades that we have to take into account and look at to improve. And then some key areas of intervention, really focusing on some, some that you guys have already enhanced with the courtyards. We have this huge, large parking lot that used to house the market. We, we'd love to see the market come back. Maybe we can share it with the other end of the street. And then we also noticed that there's this cute little pocket. You guys have done such wonderful improvements already along Third Avenue. There's this cute little pocket and it, it leaves a, something to be discovered. And something that maybe we thought of could be like an outdoor, a little like brewery or a place that can be programmed. For a little mini festivals or little art community gatherings that maybe you don't need the entire lot that you see as shown in number three. But just something a little bit more quaint, comfortable, something that, like I had mentioned, left to be discovered. With different precedent imagery to show how we can create these environments, really create activity through lighting. Outdoor dining, art, as was mentioned already. And then our revitalization vision. The biggest paragraph, the most important paragraph is this last one, so I'm just going to go ahead and read it. Given its central location between the university and the West Business District, as well as its proximity to the railroad and the New River. The newly updated district will become the city's connection to the community fabric. The elevated pedestrian experience and upgraded storefronts and facade elements alongside key placemaking efforts. Will provide students with a place to hang out, families a reason to walk and shop, and then, and the community gathers as a whole. So we're really, really, really hoping that this becomes that center for everyone. A, a place where people can meet and meet up and hang out and just be a part of Radford as we know it. Facade concepts, we really love the bones that you guys have. So it's everything that we're talking about, all the interventions that we're doing is really just to enhance and modernize what you guys already have. So these are just some examples of ways of taking kind of classical, traditional type architects, architectural styles. And then adding materials and lighting to provide a, a little soft, modern touch to it. So then we get into, we took little vignettes down, down the street. And just focused on what we could do in really key areas. And the idea is that a lot of this is very conceptual, it's very much a vision. It's just showing the potential of, of each of these storefronts and what it could be. The materials are, you know, once we get into the reality of everything and how we want to move forward. Are up, up to, to be modified and revised, but this just kind of gives you a vision of what we, what we could be, what it could be. So again, starting with the existing storefront that you can see down here. And then taking, we're really keeping the storefronts where they're located, the roof, roof where it is. And just taking down some of the applied materials like this stone that. and just taking down some of the applied materials like this stone that we see here, hopefully revealing the existing brick that we have. If it's not existing brick, we can do brick veneer, painting that, adding, adding some different materials, coming in and modernizing the storefronts, adding operable windows. I know through COVID, a lot of people want operable windows. They want to connect the inside to the outside, and so we really are looking at that and some different ways we can do that, which you're seeing in this middle precedent imagery here. And again, bringing in some kind of encouraging tenants to bring arts and branding and life to their own storefronts as well. So this is another little vignette that we did. This is around the alley. Something that we wanted to do is really create a gateway. And so we, the idea here was that eventually maybe this could become a restaurant that could then open up to this plaza. So we're talking about new storefronts, a new sign band that then extends across the opening to this, to create this metal gateway that could be backlit. We also were talking about every, with everyone during our conversations in the very beginning of this, adding lighting to uplight this wall to get it some interest. We can even use things like RGB colors, which you'll see later on in the presentation, to give, you know, through the holiday seasons, you can add, you know, if it's St. Patrick's Day, you can change the light to green, and it's just a simple way to address, you know, the holidays and re-energize these, these key areas that we're looking at. This was one that we felt like there's a lot of really just great brick detailing in here. So it's really just about cleaning it up, adding some awnings, adding updated signage, really looking at the storefront and improving that, giving more windows to the retail, really enhancing that connection between the exterior and interior environment. Again, similar here, we're, we were looking at removing that beige tile. There is, we were hoping that there's existing brick behind, but then adding some detailing to give some some idea of windows, just to give some detail to that second-story facade, and then keeping the existing materials at the bottom. We really actually loved that green stone, and we think if we could clean it up and refresh the storefront, it could look really, really nice along the, along the streetscape. And then I'm going to kind of just go through this because I think a lot of your, and I see a lot of these similar interventions where we're really keeping the, the traditional details and historic details, and then enhancing it with some modern touches, and really focusing on the storefronts and how we can, you know, do minor things like painting or replacing, adding planter boxes, adding subtle details, adding lighting, introducing mixes of materials. And then I think I'm going to jump ahead because I think what's really powerful is this slide. So you start to see these series of vignettes come together. So what may seem like individual buildings on their own, once you come together, you really get this richness, this fabric, that then starts to tie into the details that Tom and his team were talking about on, at the street level, creating the, creating that energy and that relationship between the facades, the interior storefronts, and the exterior upgrades. And then we just kind of, we didn't have time to go through every single facade, so this just touches on that what interventions could be done here in a narrative form. And then just some, some details, looking at awning types, canopy types, sign types for the retail tenants. Lighting, some, this is more focused on facade lighting, uplighting, downlighting, just creating some interest at each retailer's storefronts. And then landscape lighting, this is where we, we touched on adding some color and vibrancy, adding that RGB uplight, just giving a little bit of an extra interest to the landscape and the courtyards that you guys already have in place. And then landscape elements, Tom and his team already touched on this, benches, outdoor dining areas, plantings. And then, and then, whoops, sorry. Also improved graphic wayfinding. So we kind of did a quick study. By no means are we saying that this is exactly what it's going to be, but we have a pretty strong environmental graphics team in-house, and they got really excited when we shared this project with them, so they went ahead and took your logo and showed what it could look like on some wayfinding and signs and maps and how that can be integrated into your street lighting as well. And then summary, I think we all know what we're looking for, you know, we're trying to create that sense of destination, increased dwell time, that sense of community and through lighting, through subtle material changes, through enhanced storefronts and modernization of materials. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, so that's all for the presentations at this point. We will go ahead and open up the discussion.
Okay.
Any questions council may have, and then we'll have Abby kind of wrap everything up and close that up.
Well, I'm just going to start off by saying, wow, you know, this is kind of amazing. Thank you all to everybody on the team for the hard work that you've done. Thank you to everybody who participated to help with the ideas and move things along. I'll save anything else until the end. David, what do you have?
Well, I'll, I'll, right, I, I think this blown away. I think one of the, you know, we lived here six other day, and we just wanted to come into it, and I, you know, came in expecting to be very impressed, but I also, it happened just yet to play, and that's where my level of advocacy was. And then we come in with all these beautiful cars and the fun cars and these skate, and it's just gorgeous. I mean, it, I've lost my sense of creativity and imagination as well for my development. So thank you. Because it really is a gift to have a lot. I guess I, 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 one of my questions is just, how do we begin prioritizing, or do you maximize comments? I don't, I don't even want to, I don't want to perk or force, but, you know, we've got so much wonderful stuff to do here, so many ideas, how do we, how do we stop?
Well, I'm going to say something that I won't turn it over to you, but one of the things that I thought we could do after we get through this process is to talk about what some of our biggest challenges and opportunities are and sort of structured in that way. And then everything we do will be answering one of the issues. Certainly, there'll be some structural things that have to happen before the other stuff can happen. There's a lot of conversations with property owners. And I do want to just say, everything presented here, somebody is watching this later, and it's like, wait, my business is there, that's a different business. No, 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 no. These are just ideas and concepts for now, but we want to work with our building owners, we want to work with our businesses to figure that out. So there's going to be a period of discussion, although I do think it will be quick. I don't think we're going to extend this out for years or anything like that. But the hope is to create an action plan based on what we've seen as these pieces. For those that are joining us, and happy you, you may touch on that at the end of the presentation if you would. To talk about next step, there we go.
Actually, it is in my.
We'll come back to that. David?
I think I'll lay on Abby, but you're exactly right. What was intended by this initial planning piece is so that you can get those ideas, we start pulling those things out. It doesn't mean that something's going to look like this, but that's going to be the name, or that's going to be the business, but it's to help get you generate, thinking about the lighting, thinking about, you know, wayback, thinking about how those pedestrian interactions are going to be where people are going to gather eat or sit and have ice cream cone or visit or whatever the case may be, thinking about our entertainment and another venue speaking coming up, you know, how that is all going to lay out. There's going to be planned next steps, right? And this is the conceptual, you're thinking about it. We need to get that into a material item, and it can then become a set of plans. Our goal is to work on the infrastructure piece of that and how that keeps the hall as ever. We'll come back to that in a little bit.
And some of this may be things that will happen six to 12 months. Some of it may be 24 months, some of it may be 36 months. So all of this, when we're sitting here here now, some may happen, not all. And it takes some time, you know, we know that, but I think that's the next step, is to kind of identify those challenges that we have to address right away, that would be beneficial, some of the opportunities we can take advantage of right away, and then certain structure would be helpful. You have anything else?
I would say that another thing that I really quite appreciate with how multi-purpose so many of these things are, especially looking at the farmhouse, they serve the first hand, they, they, they start aesthetically very even. And I think that that sort of goes throughout many of the workshops, you know, many of them. They, they're very, they all serve many purposes, and they're really beautiful.
Absolutely. Jesse, what do you got?
Well, I think we're all hitting on a similar, similar note. I think when I'm looking at all this, what comes to my mind is there's a lot of pieces, and some we can move easier than others. I love the bumping out idea and creating more of an interactive environment downtown. But one thing I know, I have a good question on this council, we've talked about this before, how to better utilize that space. And what we hear from some of those businesses is that middle lane is used for unloading and loading to get their supplies. Have you guys, was that discussed? Any ideas on that?
Well, and let me, let me say this. The big change for this is that that is no longer a truck trail for mainstream cylinder bypass. That all goes onto Rock Road, for those wondering where all those trucks come at. They're geared toward Rock Road. That gives us opportunity, and honestly, figuring that part out is probably going to be one of our first steps on where we could have loading zones, where we could have parking, where we could have, if we do bump outs and things, what could be possible?
Well, I was just curious, because that, that would be one of our first concerns. Because I'm not talking about the group way that's coming up, I mean, when I'm talking about the support.
Sure.
So, what I'm just curious, and maybe we should probably fight that particular challenge for us, is that middle lane is utilized right now as a loading zone. So I was just wondering, if you guys were conceptualizing this, if that was something we thought about, or was that a consideration?
And I'll just add, that has been a hot topic. So we want to make sure, when we're looking at parking or looking at the room, we also want to make sure that we are allowing the businesses to be able to continue at this. So certainly, the last thing we want to do is provide barriers for them.
Right.
For their, for their, to make it efficient for the bits. But I think there's some adjustments that can be made, and we're looking at those, we'll to meet both goals, both our goals plus helping our businesses.
But I just wanted to make sure that that was somewhere there, because I know that we conceptualized it and had that, we kind of keep bumping up against that, and some of our businesses, they want to get a little, little panicky about how they're running forward. So I absolutely, I love this, that we think our downtown is a destination downtown. I'm very excited about that. We're talking about too, you know, how do we go about those steps? And I kind of am looking at it as building, they will come. You know, they'll help our current businesses, they'll help us recruit businesses, and also symbiotic for our residents, because now we're creating new space for them. So I like it that I see that there are some immediate things we can do, some little pieces that we can control, you know, in regards to our budget. So I like that, that was important. Very exciting.
Thank you, man. Well, that's a pretty good, well, I'm going forward to a very small town, Mississippi, one traffic light, turn on a turn light. So my thing is play off of our lives. Our town is very sleepy, Main Street. I've seen the facade improvements and all that, and downtown destination. And the few words I like to think of is intentional, it was intentional, that we meant to create a downtown that is economically vibrant, that is engaging, that's as interactive, that people want to come there, about the energy, that's like, create a landing spot, a destination for them. And so, so I love this, this is not, I have a lot of facade, and this is amazing, doing this is all conceptual, so people who are listening cannot be replaced with this, maybe, maybe look pretty. Oh yes, I'm excited to see what happens. My name, of course, is, it turns, I think, it gives me excitement about counting. This is very exciting, because Radford has so much potential. And this is one piece of certain that promises, and this gives us all the notes to put up, finish line, finish line, and put this in place, where our destination, we have everything, this park, we got open restaurant, all those things, very exciting.
Yeah, I won't repeat everything, but I will build a little bit off of that, so same there, Jesse, the same, about recruiting businesses out. I can think, you know, the last decade plus, how many business there are, some businesses have been able to maintain that, but how many have come in long? And I do think that there is use in, in the potentiality for trying, I want to be able to build an area there that will help this business to stay. So appreciating the hard work. I've got one or two questions, but I think I can put down the road. So, yeah, that's, that's all.
And I have a few of the things I want to say, but at this point, and happy, I don't want to take your fun too much, but at this point, I think one of the real keys is going to be working with our boards and commissions. We've got several members of different boards and commissions here to talk about trees and lighting and plans for aesthetics and and how we even work with our property, our EDA to talk with our, our reselling. You know, the top program has been successful, and I think the EDA and its system has helped expand that and make that better so that we can do more with it. I think if we can work together, just as we've worked to get to this point, we can build these plans into place that can be a workable document over the next few years. And I will say, there are some things I think we want to step on the gas pretty quick. And so one of our goals is to really move fast so that over the next couple of months, we'll see a lot of discussion and moving forward. But this won't be a document that sits for a while. This will be an action plan that will be taking place early 2022 and throughout the year. So that's my hope anyway. But happy, I'm going to turn it back over to you, and then we can wrap things up and go to the next.
Okay, thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Rocky, and I'm the City Council Commission. And so I am just giving her some great ideas tonight. And when I, when you have said that, this game, trying to create with, in the, in the.
You're good.
Okay, so what we're trying to create is attractive destination. It is a destination, but we want it to be more attractive. And what we're trying to do is help for people to come, you know, for people to be attractive, and for people to come and live, work in that business, and as you all know, to create a space for people, you know, community members can bring their family, bring their friends, and spend more time, and hopefully will spend money and help the local businesses that you know, come. So that's, you know, all these ideas in summarizing, that's what we're trying to do. And throughout the conversation that you brought this up, the project, I think, as I'm talking to people at stake, all the meetings or any case, even the survey respondents who took part in the survey, you can feel excited. You can also feel that they're really glad that City Council have, you know, putting the effort and focus on this area. So we can hear lots of excitement that they want to know what the potential, that, you know, how these places are going to be reimagined, public spaces, you know, that are better utilized, and how the historic buildings are going to be able to accommodate new, deeper uses and new type of uses. So, let me, yes. So, you know, this plan is intended to be intentional, to be practical, and also to be able to achieve. And some of the, you know, recommendations, and I might go to some in more detail, and the others are just, you know, skip through. But these recommendations are really to meet the goals of the plan. And the number one recommendation is to develop incentives, attract, to be, as a general study. But I know I don't want to wrap it up soon, right?
You're doing great, you got one.
So, you know, we want to develop, you know, the city can develop incentives to attract businesses. And we are looking at, we're doing the survey, the inventory of the different type of businesses in the area. We see that, you know, maybe you get some specific type of business that the city might want to go after. Or, you know, increase the variety of type of businesses in that area. So that is something that maybe you can develop some incentives to do that. And the second recommendation is that we identify and dedicate public funding to maybe support for sharing of the big improvement out there. And the third recommendation that we are looking at, you know, there are vacant and underutilized buildings there. And maybe how you can develop programs to support, you know, to market maybe, because, you know, those vacant buildings. Some of them, you can see in our plan, we have detailed work on the recommendations with, are interactive mapping or featuring these vacant properties. The next policy that we've recommended is we need to partner with local businesses to organize special events. And that will draw people to the area. And the last point on this slide that I want to focus on, the integration, the boost, currently, you heard Sam talk about, you know, those windows and storefronts, so maybe we can encourage a business. you know, those windows and storefronts, so maybe we can encourage the businesses to, um, en- enhance their transparency. You know, the storefront transparency and then we're also looking at maybe, um, um, the display of product and services and also installing attractive signage. So maybe like staff in our, you know, the city can put together some examples where, you know, businesses can be referred to those examples and, and. Uh, another recommendation is really to explore, uh, creating and opening a district and design guidelines to establish consistency and really to meet the, the, well, the expectation of this area. The other thing that I also like to point out is we're looking at our, the regulations or policies like zoning ordinance. If there are policies in our, um, you know, zoning ordinance or any, uh, city document that our barriers, you can develop. That is, you need to address that. Uh, you've heard about, we've heard a lot of people, the education process, how people talk about parking visibility. You know, how we can make it more, uh, visible to maybe, and using it more efficiently. So redesigning these parking lots on Main Street, that could have to be to make it more efficient, increase availability and also the access into these, um, uh, parking lots. Uh, the next thing is again, the attractiveness of the parking lot, so maybe, you know, improving and you are already doing that, you're improving the landscaping there. So I continue to improve the landscaping around the property facility. The other team members have already talked about landscaping, I will just, uh, put people through that. And then, uh, they talked about, um, pedestrian environment. And the last thing that I do want to find out is, you know, the productivity farming will break for. And so, yeah, that is, uh, I think that's, it is still a possibility, that's something that we'd like to continue. Uh, addressed the infrastructure needs, you know, sidewalk reconstruction, blah, 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 and then like, uh, before mentioned about all the art, you know, the gateways and all the beautiful place that we want in that area to make it attractive. And going to the next step, this is really the first step, you know, city council effort in developing. Community engagement has been key to, to this, uh, project. And, uh, it's a couple of ideas, what we've raised throughout the process, shape, the whole concept plan, the building design. And even these policies that I mentioned here, it all came out of community engagement. And some of them without, uh, you know, observation and inventory and analysis, some of the policies came out of that. But either the key things that came out of, uh, from, either that came on this plan really came from the community. So I'm so excited. So what I think that, you know, the next step really is, right here we are in, in what are implementation options? We have, you know, a city council and staff and other stakeholders, we have to explore the implementation options. And that is, uh, either we are ongoing discussion, it's one of the next, you know, few minutes or next, uh, few weeks or months. But we have to do that and get a specific solution project that we can incorporate in your capital movement program. In your guideline, advice, have the guidelines, you know, whatever it's needed. And really going to the last, my last slide, we have, I did that on short, to mentor initiative that, you know, that the city can do to support redevelopment and economic growth of the area. And number one is prioritizing and facing public infrastructure as, uh, investment. And I think this is already, already, probably has already been done. Uh, Sam and her team has already done the phase recommendation and also put some estimates. And, um, Tom and his team are going to do the construction estimate and also provide, you know, the base recommendation. So that's already going. The second, um, initiative is really formalizing policies to address light, vacant and underlived property. I mentioned about the marketing for the vacant and, and the utilized property. Another thing that I've noticed too, there are many, some are doing those things and probably, I mean, some businesses have been there for long. Other, other ways that the, you know, council can collaborate with them and maybe provide incentives, incentives or highlight these businesses that have. Been there, been very, uh, dedicated to that, you know, so that's one way too, that maybe incentives or, you know, some highlights, highlight. And the other, um, initiative that we talked about, uh, developing new financial incentives to encourage business retention and attraction. Maybe the city can think about public private partnerships, maybe facade programs, so there are different ways that maybe, you know, but improving areas. Look, maybe a facade program that will help in retaining and attracting, um, businesses. The last point I want to make is that, you know, really you've heard again, people, you know, our stakeholder meeting, we have, and that. The river is underutilized and some of our natural assets, some of our historical assets, our community assets, like, uh, students, like, you know, rats, you know, birds, you know, coming. Uh, we have students coming downtown, you know, so, uh, I think those are, and then surrounding areas to the neighborhood, it's how we can get those people to come, creating a better connection. So with that, I will complete my presentation, but I really thank you all for this opportunity. And we at the region commission are really thankful for the opportunity to collaborate and create this plan. I also, you know, very grateful with, uh, Sam and the team, and I really like to see the city staff, your leadership, thank you so much for this opportunity to create this.
And I just have to say thank you, I think you all were, uh. Okay, so we've got a lot to do, the work is ended, the work is just beginning. Um, so with that in mind, council has a retreat scheduled for a week from Wednesday. I think this will probably be something that we talk about a pretty good deal on at that retreat. Because that's sort of setting what our priorities are for the next year and, and how we can begin to engage them. I would ask this, um, all of our boards and commissions meeting in October, in November, to please have this as an agenda item to at least begin discussion, uh, for EDA. You all have done an amazing job of POP and, uh, helping us with the ready program. I think two things to talk about are what are some of the elements that made sense for, uh, in, uh, incentive program? We had talked about, one of the problems with ready that we knew going into that was that was for new construction only. We didn't really have something for redevelopment. I think it's time to have that discussion at a pretty serious level. So media can begin to discuss that this next month, I think that would help us move more pretty significantly. I know our beautification commission is here, I kind of gave them the heads up, I serve as a liaison with, with members of the beautification commission. I think next week we'll be talking a lot about possibilities, we may not be far enough along to actually pick trees and lights and all that, but it will be more away. So I think, I know this is a discussion piece and, and we'll make sure we get copies, at least digital copies of this of. Um, parks and recreation, I think there's a perfect opportunity here to talk about how we connect with our park infrastructure, the river, and how does this work together and what are some of the visions? It sounds like we're pushing things pretty quickly, but the reality is we need to move now. And, uh, everybody needs to engage right now. Planning commission, if there's anything zoning wise, if there are some issues we need to address, let's get on that and try to get that knocked out here in the near future. All I can say is thank you to everyone, I'm a little overwhelmed because this has been so amazing. And the work that you have done shows how Rappahatchie can chart the course for our success over the next half century. And so that's very, very exciting. Um, with that, is there anything else, council? How about we take a little break and then we'll go back together for a regular conference? Thank you all very much.
Cool, bye, guys.